Call to order, the Board of Supervisors meeting for Monday the fifteenth of May two thousand seventeen. Join me and call pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the government which has established one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All call please establish a quorum.
Supervisor John Stavonis.
Here.
Supervisor Linda Waite.
Here.
Chairman Dan Wolpel.
Here.
Supervisor Chuck Teis.
Here.
Supervisor Tony Hain.
Here.
Alright, good to know. Alright, meet and greet. We have a huge participation this evening. It's all yours, the floor is yours. Just tell us who you are. There you go, live in the town, right? There you are.
Concerned citizen.
That's my proper response.
Yes, that's fine. Laddie, do you care to introduce yourself?
If you will let me.
Alright.
I'm hanging myself. Hi, I'm Les Chatton, good and dry.
Alright. Next item on our agenda is public participation. Do you have anything in specific you'd like to chat with us about, or are you here just to listen tonight?
Uh, I'm just, well, mainly on the Haberly Road parking lot, how that's coming up with that.
Okay, we'll let you, uh, we'll let you throw your two cents in at the time we get to that agenda, okay? Enough. Agenda, has it been properly noticed?
The agenda has been properly noticed.
Need a motion to adopt?
Move that we adopt the agenda, May fifteenth, twenty seventeen.
Second.
For the Board of Supervisors meeting.
Motion by Chuck, second by John, to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Alright, next item. Amy, this seems like it's a little high tonight. Let's speak to...
I'm getting an echo.
Getting a little bit of an echo, maybe turn it down just a tad, the amplifier. Okay. Still hear us there, Laddie?
Yes.
Okay, good enough. Okay. We have minutes here for approval. We have the Board of Supervisors meeting from April eighteenth. And we also have a special board meeting and road tour which took place on May sixth. Are there any adjustments, additions, adoptions to either of those minutes?
Yeah, the only one I...
Pardon me?
Um, line twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven, I talked to Amy, forty-four, forty-five. And then the next page should probably be reversed because I wasn't on the board then to make a motion if it's in this order. So, if you just switch those two around, I talked to Amy, she said she would switch them around, that would be...
Okay. Alright, any other changes? Alright. So, we would need a motion to approve those minutes, both the special meeting and the Board of Supervisors.
Move that we approve the Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, April eighteenth, twenty seventeen, with changes. And also the Board, the Board of...
Special Board? Special Board meeting, road tour?
Special Board meeting for the road tour, uh, May sixth, twenty seventeen.
Alright. Another motion by Chuck, a second by...
Second.
Go ahead.
Second by Tony. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Carried. Alright. Pending business, discussion in action. I'll talk a little bit about the Clark Lake Dam. Tony, where are we at with that view?
We went Saturday morning and cleaned the grates, and all the boards were out, and it was at nine point two. Supposed to be eight-five to nine-oh, but, uh, water's flowing good and there wasn't much in the grates, so... Not much else we can do.
I had a conversation with Mark Weise, who is the Clark Lake Association President. They had a board meeting after our park meeting last week. And, uh, although the people on the lake are happy with the water level, they, uh, he stressed the fact that the water level will not necessarily maintain at that level. Uh, and tried to make sure that they were aware of the fact that it's actually well over where it's supposed to be. All the boards are out, so depending on what happens with the rainfall. So, he cautioned them, but fully expects that as soon as it's below nine, we'll start, or at nine, we'll start hearing complaints from them relative to that. He also asked me, excuse me, uh, he also asked me to check with the DNR regarding what would be the process if in fact they ever want to raise the level of the lake. And, uh, so I talked with Miles Winkler, and it's, nothing's changed. They would have to petition the town to make a change. It would then go before an administrative law judge, but if there's one person that objects to changing the level of the lake, it stops dead in its tracks, it goes nowhere. So, I just reaffirm that with Mark, so he knows what's up. Um, there's no chance that anything will happen with adjusting the lake level upwards in the summer. And he understands that, and the DNR does as well, because they're concerned about the winter problems if the water level's too high. The other thing which I was unable to confirm is that there may be a change in the fish manager for Clark Lake, and he's the person that directs us with the screens. So, haven't heard anything back on that except rumor, and, uh, so as soon as I do, I'll, I'll let everyone know. So, any, anything else on Clark Lake?
That's it. Um, well, the other thing is the guys are gonna put the, uh, buoys in either the end of this week or first part of next week, so they're, uh, you know, in for the Memorial Weekend in case we get a heat wave.
Okay. I look forward to that, the heat wave. Alright, uh, with that done, let's talk a little bit about the Haberly Road parking lot status report. Chuck, you're the lead on that.
I just talked with Greg Coulters today. The Wisconsin Coastal Management Program has approved his request to increase the funding of the grant to cover the additional costs that are involved in completing this parking lot. Now that it's gone on for over a year, the estimates are going up. The grant, uh, the Wisconsin Coastal Management Grant will increase and cover those expenses, it looks like. We still have, uh, to fill out the application and send it in, and then wait for the money in hand. The other part was the soil and water agreement, or the agreement with the county, cooperative agreement between the town and the county for that parking lot on our property. It's before you tonight, uh, if you'll note the changes that I've requested on page one and on page three, which would be your second page. I don't believe you have the original page two. The major changes are on page two. Basically, page one is, is a couple of mistakes and the fact that Leo Zipper is no longer chairman.
Does he know that?
I don't know if he knows that yet or not, but, uh... On the next page, all the listed requirements, number three, under A, has a change in it now. We paid through eleven thirty-one of sixteen to get the necessary permits and that. The parking lot was supposed to be completed by then. I don't feel that we should be paying for any more fees or renewal of, of, uh, permits or anything like that. Number four, the county asked for authorization to ingress, egress, regress on the entire parcel, twenty acres. That is a restricted area, it's a landfill, so what I am doing here is restricting their access only to the area necessary to build the parking lot. That's spelled out in number four.
Okay.
Number six, originally said the town would be responsible for installing, purchasing, installing these signs. Wisconsin Coastal Management is going to supply the, the sign, I believe. Ducks Unlimited has offered to pay to have them installed, so the town is no longer going to install them. And number seven is a new item. The town has appropriated two thousand dollars toward that project. We've already expended those two thousand dollars as of December thirty-first, twenty sixteen. It's my feeling there are no more funds available from the town for that project. Get down into the county's, uh, requirements. Number eight, it said that the town would install them, the county will now install the signs. Number nine is a new item I added in there. After nine, within ninety days of completion of the project, we need to have a complete portfolio, if you will, of all the invoices, maps, drawings, and everything else permits that went into that project, so that we have a file of it. As it stands right now, I have a few pages here and there, and the county soil and water department's got a lot more. And, uh, it mutually agreed that they will come about, but, I mean, it's better to have it in writing, I guess. Item C, one and two were in the original agreement, three and four are new items. The long-term maintenance of that parking lot, the, uh, the road grading of it, uh, just for conversation here, should it be open in the winter, it would be the snow plowing of it, uh, what have you not. All long-term maintenance would be Door County Soil and Water Department's responsibility. We had originally agreed that we would police the area, pick up the garbage, you know, should somebody leave their lunch behind after kayaking or whatever, and we will continue to do that portion. Number four is probably going to be the sticker, but if there is misuse of that parking lot and it creates a nuisance, should it become a dumping spot again, I think the town should have the full and final authority to close it and gate it off and end it right there. There would be no ramifications or retribution, uh, to any of the contributors for building that parking lot. We would not pay anybody any money or return any funding for mistakes. We give them the mutual opportunity here to, uh, try to work some problems out, should there be some, but if it doesn't work, we close it. Now, the, uh, court counsel is not in the office for the next two, three days, so I can take this down to Soil and Water if it's approved here, and they will have court look at it, and we'll go from there.
Well, obviously, the last one's probably gonna give them the biggest rub, but I'm sure that the corporation counsel and whatever will figure out some judicious wording that'll get us to the same point in time. So, uh, from my perspective, it's fine, but I think we need to hear from others. Any other comments?
The biggest thing is, we were asked to help with a project here, and then we get saddled with some kind of a long-term bill. It's too bad that this parking lot created other problems out there, but those are a separate issue, and the landfill itself would, uh, eventually have come up anyway, so we're fixing that as it is.
I think you've got everything pretty well covered. You know, when you read it, you did a good job. I go along with it.
Any other comments on that?
Um, yes, thank you for very comprehensive review and revision. Um, on page two, under C, item number one, it says during the term, and I'm looking and looking for a term, is it just perpetual? I don't see a term anywhere. I mean, it commences...
The term of this agreement, uh, the work is to be done, uh, originally November thirty-first of twenty sixteen.
Right.
Page one, so that contract expires, redoing it now, and they're asking November thirty-first of seventeen. I put October, because if we don't get it done by then, we're gonna be looking at snow and wet and that. So, this agreement, uh, I, I can understand your point there. The agreement can be changed up to that point. Should there be something that, that would, you know, make this project easier, or, or something that crops up that we need to change something, we could mutually agree to it.
This is the same that's from the original...
Once the project is done, there's no more change in the contract, but the agreement continues on perpetual.
Okay, because I obviously see the starting date.
Along with the...
And it talks about term of the agreement, but it doesn't really have an ending date, so...
Right.
It's just perpetual until one of the parties decides to terminate it.
Especially with the fact that there's a, a maintenance clause in it, so...
And then my second question is, will the signage, so they're doing the signage, will the signage direct the parking lot users? Alright, you need to go to the road to put your boat in, or...
The original understanding by Coastal, uh, Wisconsin Coastal Management was going to give the information necessary on the sign. We have not seen any of that information yet. We don't really know what it is. But it's more, uh, been said that it is, uh, just explaining the fact that it's a restoration project for the lake and that Coastal Management was involved and funded the project. That sign would, according to Greg now, would be made and supplied by Coastal Management, and then the responsibility of the, the contractors to see that it got posted out there. Then there are other things, uh, we, we have several other organizations like Ducks Unlimited, who are going to donate money. They would like their name out there too. So, we may be looking at a second sign supplied by Ducks Unlimited or whoever wishes their name on it.
Made by Ducks Unlimited, right?
Would be set out there explaining what, what contribution they made toward the project.
Well, I was just thinking that if the sign specifically says access is via five hundred or two hundred feet down the road, that you have some standing if people do start trespassing over other areas of the parcel or adjoining parcels, that you have some standing to say, you know, the rules say you must access here, therefore you are trespassing and...
Do we want, uh, to your point, do we want to restrict parking on Haberly, if we have a parking lot?
What do you mean?
No parking on the road.
Again, no parking on the road?
No parking on the road. I mean, there are a lot of, and at certain times of the year, there are a fair number of vehicles that are parked on either side of the bridge itself.
Do you think they're gonna fill the parking lot?
Not at all. I'm just thinking you want to...
So, you're saying that...
Since you have a parking lot, should you encourage them to use it?
Oh, yeah, you put no parking sign.
Or would they just assume, park on the road so that they don't have to turn their trailer around?
Well, that too.
Well...
I don't care when we have it.
The fact that the creek is like six hundred feet from the parking lot entrance, actually six hundred and sixty feet if you... And if somebody were to stop, offload their kayak, canoe, whatever, and then move the vehicle up to the parking lot. But as far as parking on the road, it may be a good idea for the town to put no parking sign down, on the road.
Right, at least that way you can have a legal thing to say.
We could put public parking sign up at the driveway.
Yeah, we maybe want to put some kind of informational sign up by the... On the bridge that says public parking lot, south, something that, I don't, I mean, that wouldn't be any big expense for us to do that. So, I don't know. I, I guess I would say we leave the parking maybe alone until we have a problem. Once we put the lot in, I mean, it'll take... You're out there a lot. I know when I go by that sometimes there can be three, four cars there, but has it been much more than that, or been a problem from your perspective?
Uh, usually they park right by the bridge there. There was two vehicles, three vehicles, and sometimes this weekend. I mean, but, yeah, if you put a no parking there, you're gonna have, I don't know if you're gonna limit the time to unload and then make them go up, is there, that's just a thought, I mean, because if you say no parking, they can't even park there.
Parking will launch bolt-only or something along those lines. Well, maybe we just leave it run and see what, run its course and see what happens. If it's an issue, we can address it later with certain with signage.
The biggest problem is when we got seen. When they, they like to drive home off either side of the... Yeah, they don't care which side, they go on, so...
Alright, so what?
If he has anything else, I will take it to the court counsel and see what their ideas are.
I like the part that it says two thousand dollars, we've already paid it and we're done.
Well, I've stated that several times to them already, and now it's in writing, so...
Okay, Chuck, well then we'll leave it with you, and we'll bring it back next month, and, uh, hopefully it ends next month. We're done with this portion of it. Sure.
I'm sorry, what? That's coming up next.
The landfill, that's what it is.
Sorry. Right, and next item on the agenda is the landfill, and a couple of things. One, we give it to Chuck and talk a little bit about the cost so far, and then want to come back and talk about signage and hunting. So, Chuck, how do we fare with the cost aspects?
Well, I went out there again today with Tim Smith. As of today, we've hauled out four hundred and ninety-three yards of clay. With the purchase of the clay and the labor to spread it around, we're have a, a standing bill right now of approximately ten thousand dollars. We walked the property again, and the board was out there with me on the sixth. You've seen what problems we have. It is estimated that we need three hundred yards more of clay. And then we need, like, uh, or we need two hundred yards of clay. We need approximately six hundred yards of topsoil. We have the opportunity to take some of these dredgings from Dunes Lake, and Tim thought we could maybe mix that fifty-fifty with a, a subgrade of topsoil and spread it around there. At least we could get the grass to grow again. And then the grading, you add that all together, we're looking at approximately another fourteen hundred, fourteen thousand, four hundred dollars.
Another?
Another, and we're not done yet. We still have the fencing or gating of the landfill site itself. Now, I said I've checked several different places on different types of fence, and they're all coming in like six, seven, eight thousand dollars. So, I went to the local concrete company, and they have these big concrete blocks they call road barriers. They're one foot, or two foot by two foot by six foot, or, yeah, six foot long with a metal hook in the middle to pick them up. They will sell those for thirty-five dollars apiece, and they will haul them out there and put them in place for a hundred and twenty-five bucks an hour. So, I estimated that it would take about eighteen hundred dollars to place those blocks and enough of them to block off from where the parking lot is to the woods and keep people off the landfill proper. That would also include a double swinging gate, uh, I believe it was twelve, uh... Two ten-foot section, be a twenty-foot wide gate. Those are roughly two hundred dollars a section over at the local hardware store. Then we're looking at planting grass on this property. The original estimate I gave you was outrageous, but for about a thousand dollars, we can buy the grass, and Amy volunteered to go out there and spread it.
She ain't got nothing better to do.
Well, all we need is a spreader on the back of our own tractor, and you can see that, so it's not a...
And if we do it once, shortly after we get this so-called topsoil spread, uh, we wouldn't have to do any, you know, digging, grading, or, uh... You know, stir up the ground at all. And then the sign that we're required to put out there has already been made. That was three hundred dollars, and that's over at the highway department waiting for the call to have it installed. So, that comes to thirty-one hundred dollars. That's twenty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars we will owe. We've already paid eight thousand to have the trees removed and seven hundred and fifty to have the dilapidated building hauled out. Put that all together, thirty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty bucks. Now, when I took this project on, I came in with an estimate of thirty-eight thousand dollars, so...
I'm sure you can find someplace to spend the extra money, so that you're actually correct with your estimate.
Realistically, when this parking lot started, it come up to two thousand dollars.
It was the parking lot before the landfill.
Chuck, with the, with the topsoil, when you talk to Tim, is he figuring on just spreading that topsoil over to clay strips or over the whole area?
No, all we gotta do is cover the clay with topsoil. The other, the other parts got soil on it, and the, actually, the grass is starting to come back out there.
He thinks we need how many yards of topsoil? Three hundred?
Six hundred.
Six hundred.
Six hundred yards.
Wow.
That's a lot of topsoil.
How, how thick does that have to be?
Well, according to the regulations, it's supposed to be six inches thick.
And how it's thick is just the clay base supposed to be.
Two feet.
Well, then something isn't adding up. If you got, if you got seven hundred yards of, uh, clay at two feet deep and you're covering it, you wouldn't need six hundred yards of, uh, topsoil to cover that at six inches. Six, you know?
Yeah, I, I think his numbers are right.
You think it's...
On the clay, yeah.
If the clay is two feet thick, you know?
Well, there's areas where there's clay without topsoil.
Oh, okay. Existing clay.
Right.
Can we spread the topsoil ourselves, if we have our own?
If we could find topsoil somewhere, Tim would be delighted, because he doesn't have any.
I have scrapings off my, uh, you know, it's, it's dirt, some topsoil, manure, a little bit in there. Mix it up. I don't know how many yards I got, but I got a couple, some in the back. If we could use some of that, clean it up and haul it over there.
There's a horse farm right across the street.
I guess.
That's why I said I've, I've looked and I've talked with Coulters. He, he has actually taken some of these dredgings from the lake now and are, is having them analyzed to see what nutritional value is in them, and, uh, you know, there, there are no hazardous chemicals or anything in it. So, it is a good product, but it's more like peat moss. It, it's not really soil, so Tim thought if we mixed it fifty-fifty, we'd have something like a potting mix, and that might suffice at least to get the grass to grow.
He can mix that?
Yeah. But finding topsoil is, is hard, and topsoil's expensive. He talking twenty, twenty-five dollars a yard. So, if we can find topsoil somewhere, we can, uh... We can have the dredgings for free. It, it's gonna cost us a few bucks to move them.
To dredge them or truck them.
Six bucks a yard to move it, so...
What are, what are they gonna do with it otherwise?
They're gonna try to sell it. They're going around right now asking the, the excavating contractors if they're interested in it.
How much is there? Far more than we need. Tons. Oh, that's all that stuff, yeah, forget it.
There is, uh...
A million yards.
Have they treated the trees there?
Even if you mix it two to one area...
Has he been back to treat the stuff yet?
You mix it two to one, it's gonna grow.
No, he's waiting for it to dry up. Uh, I was out there today, it was pretty firm. If we don't get a lot of rain the next three days like they're talking here, uh, possible I can get them back in there. But that would have to be... But that would have to be his schedule too. There are some stumps that still need to be grown. When we moved out of there, everything turned to mud, so we couldn't finish the stump grinding.
Right.
And he'd come back and do that and then spray the area to keep the stuff from coming back.
Are you gonna, when you're talking mulching it in the fall or something, do you still have to do that? Cause you got all that, that pile and there's nothing but rocks in there. You're not gonna run a mulcher in there?
Oh, that, we had to get out, that's why those rocks are still there.
Yeah.
And we, we spread, salvaged any topsoil or whatever we could find around on the property. And spread it out and all those boulders and that came up.
That has to all come out of there.
We gotta pick all that up yet and then kind of level that area out yet, so.
Would you wanna come over and look at what I've got? If he came in and scraped my, you know, scraped my area up and there's a couple, you know, higher spots scraped it out, you surprised how much you're gonna get out of there?
Yeah, I mean, we can take it, we gotta pay for trucking if it's usable, you know, I don't see any reason why not. But we, in that case, we should probably go around every farmer and find out what they'd let him get rid of.
Well, I mean, it's, I loaded some the other day on a trailer for my daughter, she took a tractor and loaded.
When would he, of course it's gotta be dry, but when would he do the clay? How soon is he gonna tackle?
He, we were both out there, he thought it started looking pretty good, he could get in there anytime, you know. So he'll fit it in his schedule.
Well, certainly turned into an inexpensive project. Wish we could blame Linda because, but, oh, it's right, you were down the board.
That was her big deal when she got on, yeah.
Oh, really, there, there is nobody to blame.
Oh, I know.
A project everybody thought was, was, you know, the dump went back to nature, but.
One last question, if you make a loophole in rocks, that you make a rock pile around that parking lot?
We could, well, I've salvaged some of the bigger ones already that we're going to use.
Something that they can't drive over?
Sure.
You're just gonna haul them away, why not?
No, we're not, we're not gonna haul them away, we're gonna use it.
All those, you're gonna grade that out, all that, that pile that's there, there's rocks up this side there.
Yeah, we saw that.
No, we gotta pick that up because we won't be able to mow that area if we're gonna get that out of there.
Can't you just take them and don't them out?
And there, there's, there's a few pieces of iron in there and, you know, it's gotta be cleaned up yet, so.
Well, it doesn't appear to be a whole lot of alternatives with respect to this. I mean, I think we need to get it done and move on to something else, so. The only question would be the topsoil, if we can figure out some alternative to reduce that. Think we can certainly seed it ourselves, it really won't entail that much effort. And I think the road barriers or, and the rock that is there provides as good a alternative as any prevent access, vehicle access, so.
I guess if they're gonna sell that, the dredging and that, who gets the money for that?
It would be invested back into the project.
Our part of the project or their part of the project?
The dredging of the lake because they want to continue that.
Could be designated for maintenance of the parking lot.
Yeah.
Could do that.
Uh, you could ask that question as part of your conversation with them tomorrow, with Greg, see what, see what their plans are. I know he, he feels that they've, they've helped us cover this mess, so. So we're looking at twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-eight, thirty-some thousand bucks, yes, I go. Thirty-six, two fifty, whatever they're. We need additional twenty-seven, five, right? Well, the only place that's gonna come out of is our general fund, we don't have any budgeted monies for anything along those lines, so.
You can take it out of the parks.
Yeah.
Take it out of my new tractor.
It is parking.
Nobody likes to borrow money, but short-term borrowing for, you know, the interest rate is still low. If you would need to borrow the money now, instead of waiting until interest rates go up higher, you could look at that option.
Well, I'm a little ahead, a little ahead of myself, but I think we may have some other issues with respect to construction projects, so I think we wanna hold on that. At this point in time, we have adequate funds, I think, to take and pay the bill, we're not, from our, where we were with our budget, we have enough. We're in good stead from that perspective, it's just that it's a hit to the helmet that you don't expect to have to deal with. And we have a couple of others things that I think we're gonna have to address as well, so.
Oh boy, all right.
Well, we have twenty-eight thousand in the capital asset replacement fund, that would pretty much wipe that out.
Yeah, can we, um, can we use that money? We'd have to re-designate it, wouldn't we?
It would have to be re-designated because repairs and maintenance are not considered a capital investment.
Well, the other side of the coin is, we could deal with that later on, I think we just need to decide to move ahead with this and get this accomplished. And whether we reuse them, re, you know, take it now, yeah, re-categorize our, our capital and take the money out of that, it would also depend, I think, as we get into the year as to where our fund balances sit and what we have. So I think I, I think I'll just leave it, at least my recommendation for now, I think we'll leave it where it's at. Use our general funds to pay this bill and, and Amy, who, who gets a new role tonight as part of our meeting, will keep us abreast of where we stand with those issues, so.
Chuck, how heavy are those concrete barriers roughly, do you know?
It's a cubic meter of concrete, so. They're not gonna go anywhere. A stone weighs, limestone weighs a hundred eighty-five pounds a cubic foot, so.
I was thinking, if there was a big backhoe that we could move them around ourselves, but.
For a hundred and twenty-five bucks an hour, to have them haul them over there and place them, I think it's a bargain.
Yeah, I don't think that would be, that's the least expensive.
To save a couple hundred dollars, you know, by borrowing something, I don't know.
Are these the barriers that they use when a highway is under construction?
They are similar, these are a little bit on the cheaper side, they're not the fancy Y-shaped ones, they're just all cubes.
They're what's left over when they tell you they only have a little bit left and there's a hopper. And they take it back and dump it into the.
They make it, do they make it too?
Same thing they do with the bumpers in the parking lot, same kind of concept, but it's more of a, a block, so. All right, um, well, I guess there's not a whole lot of alternative here Chuck, so I would guess we proceed ahead and try and get the thing capped at least with clay and then.
As time permits, I guess that they probably weigh five thousand pounds apiece.
That's a little big for a backhoe.
You're not gonna move them.
They're a line truck.
Well, keep us abreast of what's going on and we'll move forward, try and get this accomplished as soon as possible. And I know somebody that's got a seed spreader, so worst case, we can borrow that and attach it to our tractor and distribute the seed and I think we'll forego the returning it to the prairie expense, which was another huge capital investment. All right. On the landfill, the other item that's on the agenda is signage and hunting. And with the DNR's desire to keep that parcel, a landfill, and not allow egress, I think we should, well, one, we talked about rebuilding the berm on the, what would be the east end, where there's obvious ATV tracks that have, you know, been going in and out of the property. So we should maybe use some of those rocks to, you know, build up that area. And I think we should put no trespassing signs, no ATV-ing, and I think regrettably, no hunting as well. We did a search, there was nothing formally done with the hunting from a resolution or ordinance perspective, but back in, do you remember the year, Amy? I wanna say it's back when Don, Donnie Hain was on the board yet. There was two.
Two thousand and two.
Look on the screen behind you, over there.
But there were.
There was two that mentioned it.
Two references about the fact that the board said, well, allow hunting, nothing formally other than that. But given the DNR's position with respect to the land, trespassing, everything else, I think it's wise that we post the property, no trespassing, no hunting, and block off access for the ATVs. Obviously, we're trying to do it at the parking lot, so we don't have vehicles in there and I think unfortunately, that's the best way to handle it, so we don't have future issues. So I don't know what your comments or thoughts might be, but.
I don't think there'd be any hunting done on the landfill itself. The whole parcel is twenty acres, it's the, the back ten that is still forested, if you will, and wetlands. And that's where the hunting would take place, so. I agree that we need to keep motor vehicles off of the landfill itself, but to allow somebody to walk in and hunt in the back, I don't know that it would be a big problem.
There's been numerous different guys that go in there, so.
I know there's, you know.
Yeah, the, the front area itself, now the way it's opening up.
There won't be any hunting there.
No, I can see them from the house real good. They're still there, but, you know, if you put in no hunting, it's no hunting.
I, I just don't know that it's wise, given what the DNR wants us to do with that property, to allow people to trespass, I shouldn't say trespass, but to allow people to pro, to march right through that piece of property, even to go back to the wetland. I mean, we're just allowing access to me, you know, the next thing is, well, I've been allowed to do this and all of a sudden, they're doing some other activity back there and it's, now it's out of our control. I know hunting land up here is scarce, but I don't think it's the right thing for us to continue with that aspect and risk having some future problems with it, that, that's my opinion, so.
Gary, do you own the land right next to it, to the east?
You don't own it on that side of the road?
By Dorland Preserve. Okay. All the way around that landfill? I mean, if, if somebody would be interested in that ten acres, probably be them. Yeah. Cause I mean, you have no issue of frontage or how to get in and out, I mean, they, they own great, the roads. If you just added that onto theirs, there is, wouldn't be no problem. Maybe they want the whole thing and we can wash our hands of the bill too. I don't think they're gonna convince them to do that.
There is a farm field on the east side, that.
What, you mean Paul's up there?
I believe that's the one, that borders to the east. Heverly Road is the north and Dorland Preserve is on the west and the south.
Yeah, the farm on the top of the hill there that butts up the floor road, yeah. Well, I think we could ask, we could ask the women if they have some interest in the back ten, I don't have any problems, someone it off to somebody, but I, I think we should prohibit access, so.
That would be the dude too, that would be, that's, use, it's John and Ray Paul's sister that owns that land there now, so. Yeah, they, they'd probably be interested in it. I think we should get this taken care of before we go thinking about selling anything off there?
No, I don't remember saying I wouldn't in, in somebody's books.
Well, it's on TV, so the people are gonna start asking.
If they watch this, that's good, I will take their calls.
All right, note that.
So where do we wanna leave the hunting aspect? I know we're gonna do the no trespassing, so.
Well, if we do the no trespassing, that means no hunting.
It, well, in theory, it would, yes.
Permission only then.
Pardon me?
It would mean hunting by permission only.
Who's gonna grant permission?
Well.
I think we should just.
Who's going to obey a no hunting sign too?
Gary can monitor it. You can monitor it.
Hire you to.
Hunting only for town board members, Chuck.
Well, do we, anybody?
No trespassing, no hunting, and see how it goes.
All right. Everybody okay with that? You wanna make a motion or wanna just leave it as is?
I don't know, what do you want?
No comments, we'll leave it, go with that. Put signage up that says no trespassing, no hunting, and deal with it from there, so. Okay. Next item is road work, twenty seventeen, road construction, surface maintenance, coverage, mowing, and signage replacement. And an added bonus Whitefish Bay Ridge or Creek. Since our road tour of last week, I had a chance to spend some time with Thad Ash with the county. We agreed on a number of different things, one of which is, all of the street signs for the township will be turned over to the county. They have agreed that our town signs aren't much different than the county, they all are either dented, banged, missing, or tipped. And so they will go about, I gave them the list that we supplied and they will go about starting to rectify that problem. They will pick up our existing inventory of signs and posts and use our inventory wherever possible until, until it's exhausted. If we have an issue with signs or whatever, you need to call Thad or, or call Amy and then she can call it in. Same thing with potholes, and I guess I just refined the pothole conversation with them, which is basically, if you see one, fill it. I'm not worried about having somebody call into the town and say, we have a pothole, do you want it filled? So if you see something, you think it needs filling, again, call Amy, I'll have her call Thad or call me or call Thad, whichever fits, whatever fits your fancy, okay? Ditch mowing, they're going to, to try and work it in starting probably mid-July. That's the, and they're gonna do a single cut, so I think we'll be all right with that. They also indicated that there's a good probability with the single cut between the two mowers, that's what they call a rooster tail, comes up where the lawnmower doesn't cut stuff. So it looks like they cut left and right and then down the center there's strip, he said wherever those occur, they'll send somebody back out and knock those down as appropriate. So if you see somebody come back out after they've been mowing and cut that strip, you'll know why, all right? Okay, those, let's leave that. I also had a conversation with him with respect to our roads and where we're at on different parts of the project. And I'll, I'll take you through where we are at, at this point. I'll start with Valmy Road. The county plans to pave Whitefish Bay from Highway fifty-seven up the hill past the Happy Hour, all the way down to Nelson Lane in the late fall timeframe, somewhere in the September, October timeframe. They will mill Whitefish Bay Road from the highway to the top of the hill. And milling removes inch and a half, two inches or more of the existing pavement and that allows them to repave and not affect the curb and gutters. So they are going to do that portion and I have told Thad that we will have our portion of Valmy Road from fifty-seven to the Happy Hour done at the same time. They will mill that surface, when that machine is there, they get this machine two or three times a year, comes from another county. And so they will pave that section of the road. And depending on what's up, once they open up the road, they may or may not have to replace the storm drains and some of the piping that's there cause that's on the sewer system and storm drain, shouldn't say on the sewer system, but it's like a sewer system there. The cost to do all four lanes and the storm drains for this particular project is approximately thirty-one thousand dollars. That's from the Happy Hour to fifty-seven, four lanes, milled, repaved, and if necessary, all new underground plumbing, for lack of a better word.
And that's from, that is past Daniel's and?
No, no, Valmy Road, Happy Hour, past the V bar, past Tippler's.
See, I, so we own that, which part do we own that?
Which part do we own that?
There, we own Valmy Road, according to them, and they've said they've done, and it really doesn't make any difference. Either way, it's six and one, or, you know, half dozen the other. They say that that arrow is an indicator of where the road is, not who owns it. And it really doesn't make any difference, because it's, really, we're going to pay four lanes from the Happy Hour down, or, so whatever. So, to do that is, is thirty-one thousand dollars. Okay, I'm going to jump for a minute here. Whitefish Bay, we talked about where we had the road heave last winter, so I went out and met Thad there. And what they're suggesting is rather than paving from HH over and past the road heave, is he's going to take out between a hundred and fifty and a hundred and seventy-five feet of pavement, which will take us east and west of the heave. All right, there's, if you were to go out there and look, there's two seams, two breaks in the road. So we'll, they will remove that pavement completely. And depending on how close the bedrock is to the surface, they'll either put culverts, a culvert or culverts in, or they'll put drain pipe underneath that section of road and try and do a little ditching in the area where the road bed and the, there is no ditch there, there's, no slope. So the plan is to try and get the water to the other side, either through drain tiles or culvert, depending on the bedrock, a hundred and seventy-five feet, they'll completely remove that pavement, find out what's up. And the cost to do that is eleven, eleven thousand dollars. Country View, they were out there, and they, um, they believe that there's a rock crevice as well as a rodent that has worked that thing through. Basically, they're approaching it as a similar cost to, to a culvert. They're going to excavate it, dig out that whole area, refill it, compact, and repave. And the cost to do that would be approximately forty-two hundred and fifty dollars. The other area that we had was Jorn's Lane. It's excavating a shoulder. One of their issues is there's no shoulder there, the road bed and the side are contiguous. So they want to excavate on both sides, creating shoulders. Then they would overlay that area with an inch and a half hot mix, and they would create and shoulder that area. And they would go in approximately a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty feet. The cost to do that would be fifty-five hundred and sixty-five dollars. So, if you add those three items up, we have twenty thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars against the budget of eleven thousand. So obviously, we're over budget in respect there. I don't think any of those roads are options to be replaced or repaired. Jorn's Lane is probably the one you could say, well, maybe, but according to the county, they have tried to repair that road numerous times, and it constantly returns as a problem. So, we may have to adjust our budgets by using some of our road construction to pay for the overage for the road pair, road repairs. So, now I'll go back to the road recommendations in terms of what's up. So if you, if you're with me on the thirty-one thousand dollar cost to pay for Valmy Road, we have a two hundred thousand dollar budget, so if we redo Valmy Road, we're down to a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. Now.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
I think I have the figures right.
Okay.
You said Valmy Road was going to be thirty-one thousand.
Correct.
Um, Whitefish Bay, the small section there, um, at the heave, to take out a hundred and fifty-one, seventy-five feet or whatever.
Right.
Eleven thousand, right? And to fix the, um, heave or potholes or whatever on Country View was forty-two hundred, right?
Yep, I know where you're going.
And then West Jorn's was five thousand, five sixty-five. All right. When I add that up, I come up to fifty-one thousand.
I put the Valmy Road into our road recommendations in terms of repaving, because it's really not a repair, and the other one. And I, Amy, could you do me a favor?
Yep.
I forgot to make copies of this. Could you make copies for the board, please? Yeah, I put that into that category, because I figured since it really wasn't a repair.
Twenty thousand, okay, got it.
All right.
But our, our repair maintenance is ten thousand, so.
Yeah, so we're over, we would be over in that category. And then, like I, as I started to say, and you'll have a sheet here to talk to in a minute, we may end up having to take some of our road construction budget and pocket a few of those dollars to make up for the difference in maintenance, because frankly, if something else comes up during the year, we have nothing budgeted to, to pay for it. So if we had a culvert that collapsed or something along those lines, we'd be.
Well, two thousand dollars for traffic and street signs is a little, low, too.
Well, yeah, that was before we, before we knew.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, I apologize, I meant to get, get this copied out, and I forgot. So, um, let's take a look at Bluff Court. And this is, uh, this gets a little interesting, because, um, what I want to discuss with you is what it costs, but I can't tell you. And the reason I can't tell you is that the county gave me all the costs, and I don't want to make it a matter of public record, so if you decide to bid this, I don't want it to be public document, so that we put the county or whomever in, in a dis, uh, either advantageous or disadvantageous position. So what I've done is, I've taken Bluff Court, and I've given you the three options that the county has given me. The first one is to mill the surface and then overlay.
Excuse me, it is bluff drive, correct?
I'm sorry, bluff drive, yeah. It's my finger. It's bluff drive. Yeah, that would be quite, quite a bit.
Wait, this was Bluff Court three years ago.
No, bluff drive. So first option is to mill the surface and overlay, and it's the least costly of the options that we were given, and so we're going to refer to that as X number of dollars, all right? Option two is wedge and overlay, that's X dollars plus eighteen thousand. And option three is to pulverize, grade, and repave, which is X dollars plus nineteen thousand. So I did give you some budget guidelines for the road tour, so if you can keep those in the back of your mind, you'll have some idea where we're going here. So I'll start with option one. It's recommended we avoid a simple overlay, and as you recall, we drove down Bluff. It was a constant ba-bum, 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 all the way down, where there were breaks about every ten or twelve feet or yards. So, the milling option will remove two inches of the surface, but unless the underlying breaks have been completely removed right after paving in a matter of, of short period of time, they're going to return. So, and they can't guarantee you one or the other, but that seems to be the least advantageous. Wedge and overlay is what they consider to be probably the next best option, which gives us better long-term option and a smoother road bed for a longer period of time. And lastly is to pulverize and repave, which is obviously the best option. It gives you the longest lasting road bed, it gets rid of all of the breaks. The cost from between the wedge and the pulverizing is really peanuts when you look at it. The disadvantage to pulverizing is timing. It could be pulverized, and it could be a week, two weeks, three weeks, you know, depending on when. So, they would regrade the road if you decide to pulverize it, you know, make sure it's smooth, but there could be an extensive period of time after it's been pulverized before it's repaved. So, the cost spread between the three options is.
Where does he, what are all the bumps from?
They just, underlying breaks in the road. He said that, um, he believes it was just overlaid, and when you overlay something that already has breaks, they almost reappear instantly.
Right. So if they're settled, and we milled the top of them off, made everything smooth to start with.
If we can get through the milling, if they get down to the point where the break is gone, and then they overlay it, it would be fine, but they won't know that unless they mill it.
Until they mill it.
Right. And then if it's not, you're.
They'd have to remill it, double miller.
Yeah, and I mean frankly, the, the cost to go from wedge to pulverize is a thousand bucks roughly, right? So, um, you know, the guesstimate, you know, if you recall from the tour, a huge chunk of our road construction budget would go for redoing this single road.
Right.
Now, if you say Valmy Roads, one we're going to do, and you're going to do Bluff Court, you're going to consume pretty close to all of it, about three quarters of our budget. We would have enough money to do Clark, Lake, or Nelson Lane. And you can either go with one and a quarter or one and a half inch overlay on that road. But, the question is, um, we're going to drain the wall up pretty good. Do we, if we want to do that, and we want to do an inch and a quarter, it'll leave us a little slush left over to help cover some of our overages, and leave us some money for anything else that comes up unexpectedly. So, and I have the cost figures, which if, if we're not bidding it, I'd be happy to share them with you. If we are, I, I think it's only fair not to discuss them, to put either vendor at a disadvantage.
Other than the rough surface on Bluff Drive, the road bed itself is in pretty good shape. When you look at the, the chunks of blacktop between the cracks, it, it's not crumbling or anything else. And if it's going to cost so much to pulverize and redo that road, we may be better off to live with it for a couple more years and let it get worse before we completely tear it out and do it over. Well, that's. Being a rough surface, it, I mean, it, nobody likes driving on something like that, but at least it's not flying out, out and breaking windshields and things like some of the other roads are.
Well, we can do that, the, the issue, or I shouldn't say the issue, the thing is that where do we put that money? Now, obviously, if we do Clark and Nelson Lane, you know, we can do that in lieu of Bluff. Six and one, half dozen the other, it's a little bit less for, for Clark and Nelson Lane than to, to deal with Bluff Drive as an entity. But it, it didn't seem like it was, uh, the road's intact, but it certainly isn't a pleasure to ride on, let's put it that way. So, it's your, your, your call where you go with it, but that's it.
We had Nelson, we put chip and seal down.
Right.
What, five years ago, four years ago?
I'd say when was the last time we hosted the bike ride? It was a year even before the end of that.
Yeah, I know, because we picked up a lot of people off the chip seal, but.
And we did part of Clark Lake last year, so this would be the section that would not, that we didn't do. And, and the county has no perspective on either road needing, needing it more than the other.
All right.
So, like, they don't have a favorite that, you know, you should do this first or do that.
But those two are in worse shape than, than Bluff Drive, correct?
Well, you have two different kinds of road services. I think the thing with Bluff Drive is it's just the, the ride in the summertime is bad, and in the winter it's worse. You know, the wintertime, you're riding down that road, it's like riding on a, in a hay wagon, you know? Because you get so much of that lift. And you don't get that as much on Clark, because the traffic isn't there, and Nelson, you don't, you won't, you don't have that breakup on Nelson anyhow, so.
Well, I'd say let's do Bluff Drive then, and pulverize and regrade it. That way it'll, that way it'll get the bumps out of there, make a nice smooth road, get a good base underneath there, and it should last hopefully ten, twenty years.
If they pulverize it and relay it, what, what do they put down for thickness?
I have a Chuck, but I can't remember.
You'd think it was like a two inch, and they compacted down to whatever they can get.
I might have.
Or maybe.
It's like the maximum. It's basically the same process that the county uses whenever it does it, whenever they do their own roads.
Do we have to put this out on bids? I mean, is it like a good thing to do? We normally do, but.
Two and a half inch.
It makes everybody happier, so.
Yeah, I said when we get done with it, we, we can certainly bid Clark Lake and Nelson Lane, and I think there's merit, and I think you brought it up, um, to make it, making it part of next year's project, whether we do it this year or where it becomes the priority for what we do next year, get some idea of what the, what the amounts might be. And if it works out, um, it comes in less or whatever, and we can do it, great. But I think in reality, we're probably only going to pave, really pave, this mile and a quarter of, of Bluff Drive, because everything else is going to consume, um, consume a wrath. And, and before you make the recommendation, let me go one, one step further, okay? Which is, I, I want to bring you up to speed on Whitefish Bay, because that plays into this conversation to some degree. And we went down there on the road tour, and I talked to the engineer who did the work for us at Clark Lake. And here's, he was out at the site, we talked through it this morning, and here's basically how he says it. Says we have a couple of options. The first option is to hire a company to come out and bore test holes throughout the roadway, to understand what the underlying foundation is like, because he thinks the foundation could be suspect, but he said, the only way you're going to find that out is to drill holes throughout the roadway to see what's up. He's saying typically that cost can run up to twenty thousand dollars to do the borings and get back to you. He said, once you've done the borings, then you're going to have to go out and find an engineer who will design the replacement. And, you know, this is before he had any work started, and he said that could run up to another twenty thousand dollars to get all that work done. He believes that with the current, what we'll call wing walls, these are the walls that are made of the stone, field stone that's, you know, packed in there right now. Although he was not out there in knee boots, um, he's of the belief that you could see daylight if there wasn't water in there from one end of the culverts, the center portion from one end to the other. He thinks there's enough erosion in there.
Through the rocks, you mean?
Through the rocks. Not through the, yeah. In the triangle that sits between the culverts, where all the stone facing is falling off alone. He believes if the water level were below, that you'd be able to see daylight east-west underneath that culvert, or between the culverts, excuse me. And he says that hole in the roadway is his, one of his key factors. He said, although we did not measure it, he said if you took a pipe, you'd probably find it goes down six feet, you know, or more. So, um, he says you, you can address this a couple different ways. He said one way to do it is to address the repair over multiple years. In other words, do one side this year, the next side next year. And what he would suggest that we do is that we would fill the area in between the culverts with riprap of different sizes, so piling a wedge of large limestone and other sized stones. And before that is completed, pump grout, which is concrete, pump concrete into that opening, and pump it till it's full. And hopefully, that fills the gap and seals it. And then next year, turn around and do the same thing from the opposite side. It has to be done in low water, um, so would be like a July or August project when Clark Lake is running at its lowest level, because you want the least amount of water flow. And you want to avoid a coffer dam, um, but you will need to put in turbidity dams, which help reduce the sediment, but you want to try and avoid the coffer dams, because their costs will go out of sight. And it will require a DNR permit, which means we, we get to go back and work with Kerry Webb and find out what's entailed in that, because anytime you do something in water, um, he's saying you could probably do, uh, a side for maybe less than twenty grand with the concrete and the stonework, so. All that being what it is, I think with one of these deals, it's, it's not like the landfill, but I think we got to get at it, because the one thing we don't want to do is have the.
Collapse.
Yeah, that would be very difficult to get a ferry to go across Whitefish Bay to carry people who live on the other side of Cave Point, so.
Ax stroke.
So this fits into the conversation about the budget and why I said I think we're really only going to pave about a mile and a quarter, so. With that, as a backdrop, go back to the conversation on paving, so.
And is the bore test holes reveal some of the...
We don't wanna go there.
Have no idea what the cost might be.
Correct. Yeah, it could be. I, I do have one tidbit of, of good news on it, and that is I talked with Wisconsin Towns Association, who did some legwork for me. It is not a prevailing wage project. So that's, uh, that's the only good news. So if you remember back when we built the town hall, we were paying 2X the going rate. So it would not be a prevailing wage project, so, depending on what would happen. So I lay that all at...
And I did not hear back from the highway commissioner either as to the background...
Right.
...of this structure, or if it would be a bridge aid candidate.
Well, the talk track is, is if you go and get, this is not sort of, uh, not absolute, but the conversation was that if you go and get a bridge grant, you're gonna go under prevailing wage. So they don't give you enough money, but they double your cost. So I, I'm not sure that that's 100% accurate, but that's the information I gathered. And, uh, so if we did get a grant for 50 grand and they make us use prevailing wage, it's like paying 50 grand out of pocket and going to 100 grand.
I guess my concern would be is if they're gonna go out there and do test holes, and I'll pop holes all over the place.
But we don't have to, that's the...
And then is that gonna cause more erosion?
Well, that's, that's this engineer's take, which is you could avoid that, and you would bite off a chunk this year and see what you end up with when you do the excavation, put the rock, and you pump the concrete in, and you find out how far she goes.
What, what are you gonna excavate?
Well, you're just clearing, just, no, no. Just the triangle below the water, between the culverts, right? You got two culverts, and then you have the triangle where all the stonework is.
Yeah.
So that would be pulled out of there, and he would pump concrete in and build a riprap that would reinforce it, so the snow and ice and, you know. You would not do the, you would not do the test borings. So, and his take is that you'd do the upstream side first. You, you don't wanna say waste 20 grand, but the 20 grand could fix, you know, most of the problem with the addition of having the backfill from the opposite side the following year. Or you could bite it all off in one year, but, you know, just it's more money what you have, so...
Did he give an opinion as to the rate of deterioration? Like, is this gonna start really failing soon, or...
I don't know.
But the, the outflow side is the one with the hole in it, right?
No, both sides. Oh, the downstream side is the one with the hole through the pavement, correct? But the upstream side is where you would start and pump the concrete and everything in from that end. And hopefully, you would solidify that whole thing, and then next year you'd come back, do the riprap and whatever else you need and to repair that area. And, um, and that's about it, so... So we need to decide, if you wanna pave bluff, that's fine, and then where do we go with Whitefish? Do we wanna blah, 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 so...
It would be better to bid all the roads that need the work, and then put the prices together to fit the budget.
We can do that. I, I think we bid, we bid bluff, Clark, and Nelson Lane, and whether they get all done or not.
Well, and then we have those estimates for our use next year in planning, and at least an estimate of what...
And if the oil price goes way up, it might just jump a little bit, but it's not gonna jump that much.
Well, it gives you a base to start with, what kind of money for budgeting at least, or whatever.
I like that idea.
This is hard to say, you know, let's do bluff drive, and the price is gonna come in at 200,000, you know?
Oh, I mean, yeah.
So then we start over again and go bid another road?
Right, no, I don't wanna do that. And, and I don't think that'll be the case, but, I mean, I have no issue in doing that if that's what you'd like to have done.
Is that in form of a motion, Chuck?
I'll make a motion that we bid the three roads, uh, and then decide which ones go for repair.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Chuck, seconded by John. Any further discussion on this before we have the monumental vote?
Well, are we going to specify the application?
Well, we'll, I'm sorry, that's a good point, thank you. And why don't you amend that motion?
Estimates on pulverizing, overlaying?
Well, on bluff is really...
One and a quarter, one and a half?
Um, well, we pulverize and grade, it's, it's an automatic two and a half. Clark Lake and Nelson, um, we could do an inch and a quarter with overlay, which would get us there.
Inch and a quarter overlay.
Inch and a quarter overlay on Nelson and Clark.
Clark Lake, okay.
And really, the point is, do you wanna pulverize or wedge or mill Bluff Drive?
Need to restate my motion?
Sure.
I would move that we bid Nelson Lane with an inch and a quarter overlay, Clark Lake with an inch and a quarter overlay, and Bluff Drive with a pulverized grade and repave.
All right.
I'll second that.
All right, so we're back. Motion by Chuck, seconded by John. That we do the bidding for Bluff, Clark, and Nelson Lane. Bluff would be pulverized, grade, and repave. Clark and Nelson Lane would be inch and a quarter overlay. All right, all in favor of that? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, good to go. All right, we will try and get that accomplished by next month's meeting, so... And as we discussed, I think earlier, we'll have the bids come in to Amy prior to the board meeting, so that we are not trying to figure out where we're going at the board meeting. Road repair and maintenance, I'm gonna give the county the go-ahead for, for those.
Did we come up with some kind of a specification sheet for the bidding, so that they both are all, all bidders come in with the same type of answers?
Yeah, we did that unsuccessfully twice.
When it comes to tonnage.
Yeah.
Maybe we could copy one of the other towns' formats. I just saw one that looked pretty comprehensive, so...
Who do we wanna ask?
I think it was Jacksonport, where it specified tonnage and...
'Cause we did specify tonnage last year, but then we...
It just doesn't work.
Didn't work out.
No.
Uh, Amy, see if, if we can at least get a copy of theirs, and we'll look at ours. I know we tried to reduce that two years ago by doing tonnage, but it came back to bite us in the end. So, okay, we'll try and...
Jacksonport, can you give an unfair advantage to Northeast Asshawal though?
We will try to do that. So on the road repair and maintenance, I'm gonna give them the go-ahead to start whenever they can on those three projects, which would be Whitefish Bay, Country View, Jorn's Lane. All right?
Country View was the one with the sinkhole, wasn't it?
Correct. Yeah, which will be kinda like a culvert repair. Same kind of a process for them.
Uh, wait a minute.
And this brings us back to our friendly...
Whitefish Bay Road, we were just gonna do it.
I'm sorry. Whitefish Bay Road is just 150 feet, right? That's where we have the breakage in the center?
That's the breakage, okay.
Right. Oh, and, excuse me, let me come back one more time. And Velmy...
The Velmy Road.
We're gonna do Velmy Road regardless, and then when it gets done, they'll fall. Whitefish Bay is a repair. Country View is a repair, and Jorn's Lane is a repair. Okay? And we're gonna bid the rest, all right?
Yes. But that Velmy Road one is just gonna go to the county, because they're tearing the rest of the road up.
Correct. They're not gonna have somebody else come in and mill and, you know, try and coordinate making a mess.
Exactly.
So, okay. So with respect to Whitefish Bay culvert repair, um, what are your thoughts on that? I mean, I gotta start a process here by just contacting the DNR. I have no idea where they sit in this, in the timing of this. So, I heard it going open, but...
We'd have, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
We'd have until July or August to do the actual repair.
Right.
Did he want the test, if, if we decide to do test borings, did he want those done as soon as possible?
I think he is suggesting we skip that step and invest the money in concrete and boulders. And hopefully, that concrete and boulder solves a good portion of our problem on one side.
So ignore the testing, ignore the engineer, and just go with the concrete?
Concrete and boulders, and, you know, pump it in and see if we can't address the problem.
I guess my only concern would be if we do one side one year and one side the next year, do we have to go through all the process of getting another permit for the DNR?
We generally don't. They usually give you a permit for multiple years, but, I mean, I, I don't know the answer, but I know with other things, it's a multi-year permit. And if it is, believe me, I'd try to avoid that, 'cause it's, that's not fun. So I, I have to put a call in to find out. I didn't wanna do that until everybody had a chance to at least, you know, see what's up.
And that would come out of the, that would come out of the road budget too?
Uh, it's gonna come out of something. Road budget, it could be capital, I guess, because we're investing in something that's there, but, um, in either case, uh...
We need to have a big seller too.
Yeah, so that's one of the reasons that, I didn't mean to belabor all of this, but trying to figure out where we're going is a little confusing this year.
We could see what the road estimates come in at.
Um, that's fine. I, I will make a call to the DNR and, and ask what their timeline is and see what's up.
But it's gotta be done. Something's gotta be done, otherwise it's just gonna wash out and then we'll have a big problem.
Get an estimate on, on the work you're talking about on the, on that?
I can get a, um...
And then again, like I said earlier, it's something, well, we've got some mighty big projects going here, and, and they all need to be taken care of.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm, I'm with you.
Might consider some other kind of funding option. And move ahead and, and fix it, get it done with, you know, and...
I mean, I think it's, uh, you know, when you think about the fact that we're gonna finally pay off the town hall, I think we have some places to put some of that money. So it's probably the timing is good. It could be a little better, but not too bad, so, um, I'll see what I can... I'll, I'll approach the DNR first and see what their timing is, and, and then depending on that, I'll try and get something more formal in the way of an estimate and a game plan. Okay? Now, if I can find my agenda. There it is, thank you. I'm gonna say, boy, I wonder what I did with that? Oh, this was all under pending business. This is exciting. Oh, wait a minute. All right, uh, next item of business is the appointment of the vice chairman. All right, and in case your memory needs jogging, I used to be the vice chairman. And since I am no longer the vice chairman and now the chairman, we need to appoint someone to act in the chairman's capacity in the event that I'm not available. And typically, the way we've done that is through nomination of the board and election of that individual. So with that as a backdrop, anybody that's interested in nominating someone, now would be that time. And Laddie cannot be our choice. Oh, sorry, Laddie, nothing personal.
I will nominate Chuck Deist to be vice chairman.
Is there a second to that motion?
You looking at me?
We've already said that Laddie cannot be the vice chairman, but we could make you. Yeah, all right. Any other nominations?
What are we waiting for?
Well, there's no second on Tony's nomination of Chuck.
Okay.
Is anyone else interested?
I'll second that.
All right. No motion by Tony, seconded by John. Nominate Chuck as the vice chair. Is there any other discussion prior to voting? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chuck, you can vote for yourself. Yearing not. All right, that's it. Chuck, you are the vice chair, thank you. Take care of that.
Do you accept it?
Do the best I can.
Acceptance speech? All right, 'cause we got something...
You better not go away.
All right. Next is the Rural Mutual Insurance Renewal of Business Owners and Workers Compensation Policies, and I'm gonna give that over to Amy. You wanna tell us a little bit?
Well, our policy is currently up for renewal. Last year, we paid $15,425. Um, this year, we were, we were billed at $14,827, which is a slight decrease of $600 from last year.
And all the coverages are basically the same, no changes on anything?
There's typically, no, there wasn't any changes really.
And our premium is due...
The end of this month.
June 1st. All right. Does the board have any questions regarding that? We've used them for shortly, short of ever, ever?
Come July 1st, they do an audit of actual payroll, and there could be some adjustments for either workers' comp or unemployment at that time.
Has that affected us in the past, Linda? From your memory?
Sometimes it's gone down, and sometimes it's gone up.
So with that as a backdrop, uh, if we wanna renew that policy, I would need a motion to do so.
I move that we renew the Rural Mutual Insurance at the annual rate of 14,827. Forced.
All right. Motion by Chuck, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tony. Any further discussion on that, otherwise we will vote on it. All those in, go ahead, Linda, sorry.
I have a question. If you save the amount in the motion and it comes in different ways, is that...
Just proposed, uh, what it... I can take the price off, to make sure feel better.
You have proposed in there, Amy?
I can add proposed, or I can take away the amount. How would you like that?
Remove the amount.
Okay.
An amended motion, all right. All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. All right, I'm much liking this new business portion a lot better. Okay, committees and committee member discussion. I hope to find that in my pile of stuff here. Okay, two, and feel free to chime in here, because this is an ever-moving topic. But as I look through the committee members, the last one that, that Leo left us with and where we think we're at, it appears that there is one open position on the fire and rescue. Currently, it's myself, John, Jason Stats, who I have not confirmed still wants to be on this, and Biz Verley, and one...
If I was a guessing man?
One open.
Jason Stats works a lot of nights, so he probably wouldn't be available, you know?
Okay.
But...
Well, I figured we'd, I'd check with him. I'm trying to at least get some point, but if you're a question mark, that's fine, I appreciate that. Peg Channel, we've got Chuck, Arlene Woffel, I think I know her, Paul Wickman, Pat Judy, and one open. Does that sound right between you two?
Right.
Anybody on there questionable?
Pat Judy is questionable. Uh, last meeting, he... made it.
He...
Uh, I got the wrong name.
Arlene?
No.
Oh, well, that's good.
The gal.
Okay, there's only four people on the committee.
Maybe that's why he, he's not there.
Okay, so I show one open, whether or not, we can come back to that. Park and Rec, we have Tony, myself, Mark Kane, Hugh... we have Tony, myself, Mark Kane, Hugh Dobner, and Ryan Brungobber, and I think all of those are fine. We have no open. Plan Commission, we have John, Tony, Mike Wolleben. Chime in if any of these are questionable. Larry Salisbury, Ed Paul, and Mary Ellen Ramstek, and one open.
Correct.
Okay. Anybody had a question in there, John?
Ed Paul is moving now. I'm not sure if he's moving out of the town. So you might wish to question him whether or not he will still be a town resident.
Can you do that, John, and let me know?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Are we gonna fill that open vacancy?
Well, that's what we're hoping to figure out the next, either now or very soon. Property Management, I got Chuck. Now, this is a guy, interesting. Leo, do you think he'd like to still be on the property management committee, or does he wanna retire his gun?
Hey, I don't know.
All right. Jerry Lentz and Rob Leonard. Are those still valid, do you think?
We haven't had a meeting in a while. Last time, I know Rob Leonard was there.
And I don't know Jerry Lentz at all.
I don't know that he's still around even, so.
Can you, um, could you make a call on Chuck?
Yeah.
Find out with him and let me know. We have one open, so, and if you have any candidates, that would be. Board of Review, obviously, it's the supervisor's chairman. Mary Ellen Ramstek is an alternate, and we have one open. All right. And I'm assuming Mary Ellen, she'd like to do that, so I'm assuming she's gonna continue, but we'll find out. Tourism Commission, we have Chuck and Leo and an open. Is that right? Chuck, Leo was an alternate? Or, no, he was an alternate?
I was the original. Leo was the alternate. We are allowed a second member on that commission now because of the tax amount collected in our town. So we need to appoint that gives us a second vote in, in anything that happens there.
Okay. So we're probably guessing that Leo is probably ready to retire, retire?
I would think so.
All right. Then we'll check with him on that. Now, same thing with coastal byways. Now, Linda, were you an alternate on that, or were you?
No, I'm not an alternate. I'm the recording secretary.
So you're actually part of...
I just volunteer.
Oh, you're just a vol, but you're not part of the committee itself?
No. I'm not a member of the council, correct.
Would you like to be?
As an alternate?
As an alternate.
Only one council member from each municipality is entitled to a vote. So Mr. Tice is the primary.
Is the vice, okay.
And Leo was the alternate, so.
If you wish to continue the secretarial, you know, you could take the committee and I'll drop, I'll be the alternate if necessary. Something to think about.
Okay. Well, you guys can, you guys can talk through that and we'll come back to it. Weed Commissioner, Leo had told me that Andy Hartman had volunteered to do that for the first year.
Who?
Andy Hartman, Acorn.
There are other considerations to take, you know, when we start talking weed commissioner. And we have not had one in a number of years. Same with the constable.
Well, we've had a weed commissioner. He's been...
I think we should just drop, or, you know, not replace those. We haven't had them in years, and I would, well, I thought, say we don't need one.
Okay. I mean, I never had to call upon the weed commissioner.
There's a new program coming up with the Fragmities and some other things here too, so.
I thought that required us to have someone.
We don't need a weed commissioner.
Okay.
What we would need is a licensed applicator, which we can hire when we need it.
Okay.
So, and it's, at this point, I would recommend that we leave the, the weed commissioner out. And I stated a couple months ago that we should probably look at our weed ordinance and change the language in there to eliminate the weed commissioner also.
Okay. Knowing how easy it is to find people that wanna be on these committees, usually what happens is the one person who shows up at our town board meeting gets elected to one of the committees. What would you like to be on? We'll come back to that in a couple minutes.
He wants to be on the parking lot committee.
Damn operator. Ah, boy, that is a great word. Tony and Mark. Paul Sorensen is no longer gone. He's listed as an assistant.
Yep, he turned his keys in.
Okay, so he's off. So it's you and, you and Mark?
Yeah.
Okay.
Who's the, who's the damn operator? Who's the other assistant?
I go down there twice a week. I clean the grates, and then Saturday, he came down with me and we pulled them, you know, did a good cleaning. Otherwise, I take a hole or rake and scrape them, pretty well clean them up.
Okay. So let's, let's leave it at this, and then we can carry this forward, and you're welcome to call me. If you would verify the people that are on your committee that are still interested in being on your committee, and I think it's property management, cable, plant commission, and then we'll work through who, what, where, and when. If there is somebody that would like to be on one of these committees that you know of, obviously, you know, it's not easy to find anybody who wants to do this stuff, but if you know of anyone, feel free to get back to me. And if you have a fondness one way or the other, or an idea, give me a call or talk to me.
I would believe that our new supervisor would love to be on some of these committees.
Many of them.
And I would, I would envision, I would envision that she'd love to do that, and I have an offer for her. She's not gonna be able to refuse. So.
I hope it has something to do with the plant commission.
Perme?
I said I hope it has something to do with the plant commission.
That's constable.
Yeah.
We're gonna give her a gun, so.
Well, on a lot of the committees, though, there are two board members already, and if you appoint a third board member, now you have a forum of the board president.
And I agree, that is a...
We have to watch our Ps and Qs on there.
Right. No, I agree, and I, I, I have that same concern. So, tell you what, let's check your committees. Let me know who's good, who's bad, how many, you know, so we can get back to a real number. And then if you have some ideas, share them with me, and next month, we'll, we'll reinvestigate this and see what's up. And I'd be lying if I didn't tell you, Linda, I'd like to see if you'd take on the newsletter. It isn't a committee, but if you would have some interest in that, I would look very fondly towards committee appointments.
Maybe we could have a public relations committee.
We, that is excellent idea. I can write that down. It'd be a committee of one. Okay. Because I certainly have been neglecting that, and it's one of those areas I think we should revisit, so.
I'm sure Clerk Amy would help you with that.
Of course I would.
I think we could entice her.
If you're the two of us, we know a lot.
All right. Any questions on that? Give me a holler.
So anybody, anybody on these committees, it gets the, the committee fee, right? Fifteen dollars? Should say what you wanna take it?
Yes, yes. So if they wanna participate. So if you know somebody. And we will give you a chance. If you'd like to be on some committee, you just heard who they are, we'd be happy to have somebody step up, volunteer. Perme? All right, you do that. We know where you live. Okay. Excuse me.
What about those two?
Uh, last one under new business is nuisance enforcement. Um, and I think this came as an offshoot of the annual meeting, but if you recall during budget time, we had set aside fifteen thousand dollars for trying to get at some of the issues that were out there. And so I guess my purpose in putting it on there was to say, is there a couple areas that we'd like to start trying to make some progress on, um, invest some of that money and try and clean up some of the issues that are pending? And so I guess I leave that up to the board in terms of where to go, and Chuck is the, the main nuisance that I know of.
That's my, one of my multiple committees. I just put the letter together today. Amy's got it. It'll be going out tomorrow for the property we looked at during the road tour.
Right.
And I would say, let's see where this one goes, and if necessary, we start taking some action. I've said before, our present attorney does not look forward to doing anything with these ordinances and citations and that. I get the feeling that he, if we forced him to take one to court, he would not go in wholeheartedly with our best interest in mind. So if push comes to shove, then we need an attorney. I think we should start looking for a, an attorney that may have some background in this, um, to get things done.
Well, let me, okay, couple things. One is, do you have a, we have one candidate that, that I don't disagree we should start chasing. Do you have a list of two or three others that you would then move up the pile as?
Yes, I do. I have a list of programs.
So we need to focus on maybe a couple inexpensive alternatives or options, not alternatives, but options. And then the other thing that I never really had a crisp understanding was, is the sheriff or the process of enforcement, if we, did we get far enough down the road that the sheriff agreed to enforce our ordinances or not? Was that the issue that you...
The sheriff will not, the county will not enforce local ordinances. We could hire a, for lack of a better word, a rent-a-cop to act as our constable, if you will, and go out and issue citations, you know, and take care of some of these problems. We still need court orders, which means you get the attorney involved and, and get a court order, and then the, the officer can go out and enforce that.
So having an ordinance is not gonna make any difference to the sheriff in terms of...
I had started the process of, of talking with the Sturgeon Bay Police Department through the new city administrator, but Leo kinda shrugged it off, so I just let it fall at that point and, and never got any real information. But his attitude was that maybe we should go to the county first rather than the city. But it wouldn't matter which police department you use, and you'd use their off-duty officers.
Well, I think that...
Doesn't matter with the city. The city would, we could make an agreement similar to our fire department agreement. Then the city would police our town.
Okay.
So, I mean, there's other ways of looking at it.
Well, we will have, of course, it's a month away, but we typically have some time where we have Randy at our beck and call, I shouldn't say that, but here for the order review. So I think we should put this, if we have time, as a side conversation that we could have relative to that, and we see where we're at, get his opinion. But...
How about the other places that we've started to clean up? Did they ever get cleaned up?
No.
So then why are we wasting our money?
They got dropped because it came to a legal battle.
Yeah, well, if we're just gonna go up to a legal battle and then drop it, why go through the motions?
Well, that's why I requested the fifteen thousand on the budget, and...
We didn't have any funds before in there to even attempt to do anything, so, Linda.
Well, I think we have to backtrack here. I mean, the nuisance prop, and nuisance property committee, as calls came into the office and as your committee identified properties, we would add them to a spreadsheet. So if someone would call with a complaint, we would just say, okay, we will, we'll identify that property and take a look. To the best of my knowledge, there's probably fifteen, twenty properties on that list right now. I don't think we ever started with a friendly letter saying that, you know, we've noticed that this, this, and this has occurred contrary to our ordinance. Sometimes just a friendly letter may do the trick.
Okay.
All right? And then if you get no response, all right, now I'm gonna send a certified letter. And if no response, you either go the route of issuing a citation or civil suit. So maybe just a letter to some of those identified properties might cure some of the problems.
I have not seen the list, or if I have, I don't recall who's, I, I know some of them. But are there ones on the list that would be a candidate for a letter, you know, that would be a minor, a minor nuisance?
The one I started with today, uh, number one, there are probably a dozen of those types of places around.
Okay.
So the first step will be a letter, identifying the problem, proper, the problem on the property and the ordinance or section of the ordinance that is being violated. And then allowing them a certain amount of time to rectify the situation. If you don't hear from them or you don't see any improvement, the next step would be issuing a citation or maybe getting a stronger letter.
Okay.
At that time, you could, okay. So you didn't get any response to a letter from the town. Perhaps you'll get a response to a letter from an attorney. Perhaps. At least you've got a nominal investment then, as opposed to going through the whole civil action.
Oh, I agree with that. I'm just thinking, I not knowing how many of those people would be responsive if we, well, what, what was the timeline you have on this one? June something, Chuck? On the one they're gonna...
The letter I just sent out?
Yeah, it's June...
Seventeen.
It was about four weeks.
Okay.
So it'd be like the seventeenth, I believe it was.
All right. So let's see, let's give it, let's give it till June or, or July meeting, and then see what the reaction is, and then step up and try the next one or two likely candidates that we might get a positive response from. Yeah, I'm not interested in Linda spending fifteen grand to chase something, but we need to have some money in there to at least take it to the next step, even if it means paying for a certified letter. So, okay, that's fine. Let's, let's do that. Now Chuck, you've copied the board, or you're gonna send it to the board? Okay. All right. Or Amy can do that. Just send it off to the board. All right. Resolutions and ordinances. We have, we have none, fortunately. Okay. Financial reports. So you have in your packet the fund balances, budget versus actual, budget versus actual amended budget, I should say, transactions by date. You have a myriad of things. Now, what I, what I did this month and what we'll do in the future is I've asked Amy at this portion of the meeting to take a couple minutes and to tell us from her perspective those things that are of some significance that we might have glossed over inadvertently, let's put it that way, or things that she thinks we should pay a little bit more attention to, i.e., one of our budget items is significantly over, and Amy, do not bring up the landfill. But, so I'm just asking her when it's appropriate to give us her perspective on a few things to make sure that we're all kind of up to speed on it. So I'm gonna turn it over to Amy for a couple minutes here, if you would.
All right. So our smoke, our snow removal is paid through March, so we are sitting at about sixty-two percent of our budgeted amount, which was a hundred thousand dollars. We did receive the thirty-two hundred from the school for the maintenance and prep of the softball and baseball fields. Our fire dues are due at the end of June, and that's eighty-six thousand seven hundred fifty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. Our current town hall rentals and pavilion rentals are about the same as last year, so there's no real change at this point there. And our rural mutual was up for renewal, and that was less than last year currently.
So our bills for snow removal are about sixty-two grand then? Right at that number?
Right about there, yes. And I don't anticipate, I don't believe we had any for April.
Okay. Any questions of Amy from the board? Yes.
Um, looking at our budget through April, Amy, Town Hall grounds, we budgeted three thousand dollars. We're already at twenty-three hundred. Did we have something out of the ordinary?
I know we paid...
Twenty-three forty-nine-one against three thousand.
And we're only, and that's only through April, we've got.
What, I'm not familiar with all these.
I'm sure it would be part of the, I'm assuming we had a true green application or, oh, not true green.
Spring green.
Spring green application, did we have that already?
We paid for that in full.
Okay, and a portion of that is attributed, attributed to the town.
Correct.
Grounds.
What else would have been in there, do you know what other items would have fallen into that category?
Snow plowing.
Snow removal?
We have a lot of snow plowing.
No.
In January, February, March.
I can look at that and get back to you.
And then, and then also our.
We had several ice storms where, where it came over special.
That's very true, we did have quite a few applications that, just in that one ice storm, they had to come out about two or three times to put some salt down and melt.
And then on page three, Town Park Miscellaneous, we had budgeted five hundred and I see that's over already, so maybe Mr. Hayne knows where.
I want to see, we put Huey's retirement in there, which was, that attributes three hundred of that.
All right, all right.
So.
We should have, we should have laid him off, let's save this a lot.
And then is our cedars, our CD up for renewal this month?
Ooh, I haven't gotten anything in regards to that.
Are we on an automatic, do you remember Linda?
It probably will renew automatically, I think it was a year, was it one year or two years?
I don't know.
I'm sure the interest rate is about to say whether it's one year or two.
Well, we can chase that down, you know, the interest rating. Let's find out if that, if it is on auto renewal, put it on hold.
Okay.
I mean, there are.
Oh, we might need it?
No, but I mean, I, personally, I've moved some money around and I've gotten some very attractive rates without having any relationship at all. And it's kind of frustrating that having had a business relationship with our bank, that they're not responsive, so at least we should look at it.
If you look at the local government interest or investment pool, they're paying a six point six five percent where everything else is paying a lot less. They've always paid us more though.
Yeah, see what the renewal is on it and let me know, we can take a peek, see what's up.
Okay.
All right, any other questions with respect to the financial statements?
No, I think it's a great idea to have a treasurer's report.
We have a treasurer, we had to find something.
We've never had a report, great.
The other treasurer never wanted to say anything.
You're welcome.
Oh, I don't know, she was always down there like.
Yeah, I know.
Can I say something?
All right, so we have a motion on the financial reports and then we'll go on to the approval of vouchers, bills and claims.
I will move to accept the financial reports through April twenty-seventeen.
I'll second that. All right, we have a motion by Linda, seconded by John, to accept the financial reports through April of twenty-seventeen. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None, carries. Okay, approval of vouchers, bills and claims, I think everybody had a chance to take a peek. Okay, it's all done.
We approve vouchers, bills and claims through April nineteenth through May fifteenth, twenty-seventeen.
There a second?
I second.
Motion by Chuck, seconded by Tony. Approval of vouchers, bills and claims, April nineteenth through May fifteenth, twenty-seventeen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay, oral committee or commission reports, minutes, et cetera. Anybody have anything in that category? All right, hearing none, I'm happy to pass on that topic. License and permits, Door County zoning and safe build, building inspection permits are in your packet for April of twenty-seventeen. Not a huge amount, but some. Any questions or comments with respect to that? All right, then we'll go on to the application for temporary Class B picnic license and we have two applications, Amy, why don't you break those two and tell us what's going on there?
The Door Devil Motorcycle Club wants a picnic license for their summer opening. It's a pig roast at their clubhouse at forty-seven eighty Matthew Road this Saturday, I believe, it's May twentieth. And so they would like a picnic license for that as well as their Burning Cow Music Festival and that's scheduled for July twenty-seventh through the twenty-ninth.
On the Burning Cow, just out of curiosity, Tony, that still presents no issues with you?
No issues at all, they, they keep a pretty tight grip on that plus they have county sheriff's deputies come through, you know, on their own, they get hold of them.
Okay.
Nope, they run a good operation up there.
They might be into their third year, I believe, when they had the first one, they were, they had to commit for three years.
Was that it? Okay, I know it's the second for sure, but I didn't remember me on that. All right, so we would need a motion to approve their application for both permits?
I move to approve the Door Devils Motorcycle Club applications for May twentieth and May, on July twenty-seventh to twenty-ninth, two thousand seventeen, at the club grounds.
I'll second that.
Motion by Tony, seconded by Chuck, for approval of the picnic license for Door Devils for May twentieth and July twenty-seventh of twenty-seventeen. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. All right, county board report, if, does anybody know District Four? I'm sorry, on my left, Linda?
Keep it brief, great.
All right.
All right, as you may or may not know, the UW extension is under total reorganizations. The Wisconsin counties have been assigned into twenty-two regions and Door County is part of Region Twelve with Door, Kiwanu and Manitowoc Counties. So we may end up sharing some resources after this reorganization goes through and they plan to have that in place by January of twenty-eighteen. There are some major improvements in some of the departments at the county. The Register of Deeds will start using new software for record keeping and all that. I believe that's being installed in June. The IS Information Services Department will be installing new compute and storage servers, so that will be a huge update. There's a new ambulance on the way by the end of the year and possibly another one in twenty-eighteen. And the sheriff's office continues to move forward with its K-9 unit. Officer Matt Tussel will be the handler and he'll be heading off to training in June. The dog will most likely come from a kennel in New Mexico and donations for this project can be made through the Door County Community Foundation if anybody would like to donate towards the cost and maintenance of the dog. Right now, all of our county supervisors are looking at the oversight committee structure and rules of orders to, to see if there's any updates or changes that are needed. And county board supervisors have been, have been invited to a tour of all county parks on May twenty-fifth. And our sheriff's department is hoping that the state's biennial budget will include some dollars in support for a new nine G nine eleven system. Nine, or NG is next generation, which would be more internet-based and as Supervisor Stavina's commented, easily locate, easily locate cell phones because so many landlines are disappearing that cell phones now are the ticket. And the next meeting of the county board is Tuesday, May twenty-third at nine AM.
Thank you Linda.
You're welcome.
Personally, two questions maybe you know.
No, of course.
One is, the IS department has been addressed as to who is going to be.
Jason Rower is our interim director and they are, that has been posted, so we'll see.
Okay.
What comes up with that.
And the other one is, do you know who the county appoints for the NWTC board? Is that, it used to be Jerry years ago?
The Jerry Ward?
Yeah, do you have any idea who they do that with, no?
I'm, is that, I, I'm not aware that that is a county appointment.
It used to be a county appointment, I don't know if it is anymore or not, but they used to.
I don't recall it being on any agenda, but if it's a two-year term, I don't remember.
Okay.
It certainly.
Just curious, yeah.
Sure.
Okay, any, anyone else have a question?
There, anything about Sam Perlman leaving Door County Economic Development Corporation?
That was not mentioned and as you know, Caleb Frostman, the new director of Door County Economic Development Corp., was at our coastal biway meeting and not a word was said, so I'm sorry, I do not know.
Okay. All right, last couple items here before we wrap up. Correspondence, again, this is all in your packet, so stop me if you have a question on something. Public hearing concerning Brad Birmingham, coming up on Thursday, May eighteenth, on his request to change his building over to another use. We still have this Linda Wade treasurer, everybody has Linda Wade apparently in their town, it must be the way this thing goes. Department of Natural Resources, what they're paying us for the acreage that they own in our town. We have a list of the permitted dwellings through the room tax, room collection. City of Sturgeon Bay Fire Department's report for the month, fortunately, they had very little in terms of need for their department. County of Door announcing the planning, zoning, sanitarian, real property, all being lumped into one, under the control of one person, which I guess is Mariah. Everything's pretty much the same from our perspective in terms of who we deal with. And this is the granted variance that was given out. City Chief Executive Chair, oh, Wisconsin Tobacco, it's not really of anything and that's pretty much it on their correspondence. So announcements, open book at the town hall, June second at ten AM, so if this is an opportunity for you to talk directly to the people that assessed your dwelling and have a conversation about the whys and wherefore's. The community yard sale, is this on or off or pending?
I have two people that have an interest in it at this point, so anyone who wants to be a part of it, we need to know by the end of the week so we know if we're going to have it or not.
Okay. Then we have a plan for the retirement party for our former chairman, Mr. Leo Zipper, which will be held at the town park, that's the pavilion, on June ninth from five until eight PM and if it's raining, it'll be moved to the town hall. So all of you that have enjoyed Leo's involvement in the town, we would appreciate your attending. We'll have some beverages.
Friday.
Friday, sorry, Friday, June ninth. So we'll have a proper send-off for someone that was in our town for twenty years, so we'd appreciate it and, and I'm sure he would if you'd make yourself available and join us on Friday night, June ninth. Our next meeting is June nineteenth at seven PM, that's a Monday. And the border review will take place on June twenty-sixth at one PM. If you'd like to be part of the border review, I suggest you go to the open book and after that, you're welcome to join us at the border review and there is some paperwork that we would ask that you fill out prior to joining us for the discussion of your assessment. And that wraps up, I think, everything. Agenda items for next month, we're going to bring back the fun topic of the month, the landfill.
Did you go over all the correspondence?
I thought I did.
We have two items down here.
One is for Amy Tank.
Uh, that'll, that's an informational thing for you.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Agenda items, the landfill, what else, we had something else, the weed ordinance.
Roadwork?
Road, yeah, roadwork, thanks, how quickly our memory fails, okay.
Weed ordinance.
And then we'll go back through committees, so please let me know where you stand on that.
What, Whitefish Bay Creek coming back or not?
And the creek will be back, or crick, depending on where you're from.
Or a bridge.
Or the bridge, the culverts. All right.
Maybe we could call that the Leo Bridge.
Could give it a name, if he gives us some cash, it's his. Lastly, we have a motion to adjourn, anyone in favor of that? Motion by Chuck, seconded by.
I will second.
Seconded by Linda, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, sir, you have a question?